If this is not continually flashing, it's not recording.
No, it shouldn't be continuing.
You doing something?
Recording now, yeah, it's recording now.
Yeah, okay, you got it. What'd you do? Oh, alright, good.
Alright, so I don't know, you're gonna keep that?
Yeah, right.
Either there or put it?
We should probably put it where the computer is so we can record the computer, right?
Yeah, I mean.
Uh, if it makes it, shouldn't it, let me get this chair out of here, on this chair. Hang on, wait, wait, wait. Hang on guys. Here. We got more room.
Okay, enjoy. I think you're waiting on Maureen, I'm not really sure.
Is Rich?
That works.
Rich?
Okay.
Is Rich gonna be on this one?
What is, what she said?
Are you gonna be on this?
No, I'm not, I'm just here for technical support.
Oh, Rich Galore, is he going on?
Oh, uh. Rich Galore?
No. Oh, he was, he was-
I think he was on last week.
Yeah, he was there on the last meeting, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That was Junior, last week.
No, that was Senior. I thought it was Junior too, it was Senior. He corrected me. Junior corrected me and told me it was Senior. He was helpful with that, uh, the screen.
I thought that was his son last week, I had no picture, so.
No, yeah, that was just, that was Senior, yeah. Who've we got here? We got enough people? Yeah, uh, that's me, I'm looking at myself. Um, we need one more person?
Yeah, Maureen.
Oh, is Merrill there?
I'm here.
He's here, he's on the phone though, he's driving.
Oh, okay, so we got-
I'm here.
Okay, good. I think, right, uh-
We need our Maureen Dovenco.
Okay, she's not here yet. She was going to be here. She said she was actually gonna come here. I don't know, she might have got stuck in traffic or something. Want me to give her a call?
Might as well.
Okay, let me go get her number. I called, I left the message on her voicemail. I wanna get rid of this thing here. I gotta re- I don't know if you can see this, but I got restart scheduled for important updates on here. It says restart now, or it says, okay, re- uh, restart outside of your active hours, just make sure to leave your device on or plugged in. Alright, can you see that blue thing or not?
No.
Okay, I'm gonna leave it alone then, I'm afraid. I don't wanna lose you guys.
I think Maureen said she was gonna be zooming in because she responded to an email earlier today where she said, I believe everyone's gonna be zoom.
Okay.
I saw that.
So what I, what I, what I suggest we do, should probably chime in or whatnot, but ultimately, while we're waiting, um, I don't know if, do you guys, have you been on the board before, have you not been on the, not been on any board?
I've been on the zoning board.
Me and, me and Danny have been on the zoning board, yeah.
Okay. Alright. What's that?
This is my first time on the zoning board.
Okay, so I'll just kind of give a, for your information, I'm sure the rest of you obviously probably know this already, just for, um, Merrill's information, so ultimately, when an application comes before the board, two ways it gets here. One is to interpret or to, um, make a determination of whether the building inspector is right about some opinion he's rendered. Somebody can ask the zoning board for an interpretation of the code, or somebody comes here because they wanna do something contrary to what the code of the Village of Washingtonville says. So ultimately, those are the two ways it gets here, pretty much anything is evidence before the board, you can consider pretty much anything that's presented to the board. Um, it can be based on, uh, you know, public sentiment, expert opinion, documents, photos, whatever somebody wants to give, the lu- the rules are pretty loose with regards to evidence. So, when analyzing any application, basically, five factors that ultimately you have to weigh when ultimately deciding whether to grant a variance or not. Basically, I'll just point them out quickly, whether the change that's being requested will bring an undesirable change uh, to the character of the neighborhood, or detriment to the nearby properties, that's one factor to consider. Two, whether the benefits sought can be gotten in a different way by the applicant, so can he get the relief he wants by doing something different? Whether it's substantial, the variance they're asking for, so how big of a difference between the code and what they're asking to do exists? Whether the variance will have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood? And last, was it self-created? Was it, was it created by the applicant on his own, um, outside of any other factors? So those are the five factors that are in the back of anyone's mind, um, questions that you have of an applicant may be posed. Taking those into consideration. When you make a determination, obviously, we have to be able to go down the line, point out the reasons under any of the factors to come up with a determination as to why the zoning board, um, made a determination one way or the other. Um, one of the attorneys for the applicants reached out to me today. I, he, he asked me about voting tonight. I told him that most likely the board, the reason why the board was meeting tonight was obviously inter additional info or the original information that you, you didn't have before you when we first met. Obviously, to formulate any questions and other things, questions you're concerned, or the applicant. And that ultimately, we would not be getting into voting, um, tonight, basically on Zoom. Ultimately, this was kind of a fact-finding, uh, period of time to kind of grasp a hold of the projects. And then sometime in the future, obviously, it could be on the same date that we have scheduled in February, the vote would happen. So I told him I would obviously, um, honor that, and ultimately, um, we would use tonight basically for discussion relative to the projects and some questions that each of you wanted to bounce off each other, or me, or whomever. So, um, that's the purpose of tonight, so, um, with that, I think we'll basically start with the first project, which is J and J Industrials. Okay?
And where did we leave off with that, at our last meeting?
So they had put, they had put the map up on the board that nobody could really see, um-
Which I have now.
The, um, engineer had sent me over the copies of that map, as well as the, uh, documentation filed with the application, so ultimately, I emailed that out, ultimately, that's uh, one of the main reasons why that was back on, and for anybody who wanted to go visit the site, et cetera.
She was just there, I just saw her.
Uh, okay, then maybe she did.
She popped off.
Maureen?
Is that Maureen?
I s- is that you, Maureen? No, she was here a minute ago and then she disappeared. Yeah, I don't know what happened.
Is she no magic?
No. She might, I don't know. I saw her, I didn't wanna interrupt Chris.
You talking about me?
Maureen, are you there?
No.
Oh.
I'm Kate, so about-
Oh, I'm sorry, Kate, I thought you were Maureen, I apologize.
No, I stopped the video because I-
Oh, okay. But I did see her name pop up, I thought, for a moment. She's trying to call in. Chris, uh, I don't know. Um, I could probably call her and put my phone on speaker, do you think I should do that?
Uh, if she calls in, I mean, we should see it pop up, it would just not have video on it.
Oh, okay, uh, okay, uh, let me try to call-
Go to her email, click on the link.
Uh, I'm not very computer savvy here.
No, she would, she would go to the email and click on the link.
Right.
Oh, uh, yeah, I, alright. Um, I did call her and leave her a message. Joe just said she's trying to call in.
It should just come in as a number without, without a photo.
I see something that says phone here on the down right-hand side.
I think she's, she's calling now.
Okay. I'm just here for, again, I'm just here for technical support, I'm just trying to keep everything working. And Chris, when we run into the time limit again.
Just go into the link.
Yep.
I'll re- I'll reboot everybody.
It was in the email today.
I think one of the questions for the Santa was meters.
Click on it, and it should open up. Period, do you have Zoom downloaded? Question mark.
Can I help in any way? I have Maureen-
Did you take a hundred dollar bills?
I, I, I just used my last one.
Make your rain, make your rain, John.
Make your rain. I have her number if one of you wanted to call her and tell her what to do.
I just, I just told her what to do.
Oh, did you? Okay, alright. And I'm recording this, I don't know if you can see, I got the camera on everybody here. It was the only way to do it, for posterity. I have those papers here, Nick, uh, Caesar dropped off an extra three, thinking maybe we would all be here tonight. So, I don't know if I, I could probably hold them up for you if you need to see them.
I, I printed them up, whatever was-
Okay.
Backed to the email for myself.
Okay, anybody needs to see them, I can open them up and hopefully you can see them. As you discuss them.
Isn't the village hall like fighting there? Has it gone down? So you should watch this.
Hi, Rich.
How are ya?
Good, how's it going?
Good.
I asked if he pops there.
Rich, if you just popped in, they're just waiting on Maureen to try to get connected.
Yeah, she's, she says she's having trouble, she's gonna try again, but she's not having any luck.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, she's not comparing to me either.
She said start the meeting, she's gonna keep trying, she's against the, uh, multifamily. Alright, so, so starting with Santa. So you, you guys got a copy of, uh, Caesar's docs, which are the existing site? Preliminary plat, and then obviously the, uh, other attached drawings. So in essence, um, the, the question for the board basically lies in the variances associated with that red line going through the preliminary pa- plat, as it, as it results in the division of the two properties.
Alright, couple questions I have, um, first of all, whoever did this, the engineer, has involved setup is lot two, and that's not the case.
No, there's lot one there, I see lot one.
On, on the actual diagram, but not on the side.
You mean on the notes?
See on the side where it, it shows you exactly all the tables, these two of them? Alright, well, the one for Santa should be lot two, but the one on the bottom, J and J, it should be lot one.
On the book, on the book table?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so that's an error, and you don't want that to go forward with that, I mean, that's not gonna hold anything up, but that needs to be changed. Um, my, my concern is, and probably the only concern I have, is I'm looking where the, uh, was it, uh, hair salon or something?
Yeah.
Um, there's like, not much space.
They, they don't have any parking space in the front of that salon. That's how low Hair Shop there is.
Well, I, I think that's on the side though. I, I think the parking for that is on the side, not in the front.
There's, there's not, yeah, there's only two spaces in the front there, but it kind of, they kinda share it with the transmission place. I only know that everybody kinda go there.
Well, no, there's, there's seven, there's seven spots for the unit, for the hair salon, on the side. If you look at the, her page, I guess, of that proposal, you'll see what the reds, yellows, blues, and greens.
Right.
That shows your parking spots, okay, and then, you know, they're assigning seven to for her business, and then you'll see the yellows, you'll see the, uh, purples. But, I'm concerned about the, where, where the line is in, on the, I, I guess that's the front, like between the two buildings? Between her building and, and the, uh, Santa Fitness, there's just very little space there, and I'm wondering why that line wasn't more direct.
I imagine it's not more direct because they have to keep all the parking the way it is. If you make it direct, you chop in the green, and then they lose the parking for us.
Right, yeah, I, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
It, it, it looks like, if I'm, if I'm reading it correctly, there's only three and a half feet there. Now, obviously, it's not a problem right now because it's just a line on paper.
Right.
What if somebody gets pissed off and they start fighting with each other, and the guy wants to put a fence up or a wall? He would be entitled to be able to do that.
Well, the only problem-
One of, you know, either one of them would be entitled, as long as the, the fence was set back a certain, uh-
Yeah, and I would think, I would think the only thing that will probably keep that from happening is if the gym was to do it, they have to cut into their parking, which obviously then-
Exactly.
That they're gonna have a problem with meeting what the code requires.
I, I don't foresee anything like that happening, I'm just saying, if it does.
One question was, uh, what is, does Santa, is Santa locked into keeping that as a gym? I remember us discussing that briefly.
Uh, that was my ma- that was my main concern.
Yeah, I remember, yeah.
Are you probably gonna change it up, sell it, sell it to somebody else? Or do something upright away?
I mean, I know for a fa- well, here's, here's the answer to that, so basically, it doesn't matter what they're locked into, because the lease that's in place right now, although that may require it to be a gym, once they own it, the lease is dead.
Right.
Then basically, they're the owner, and then the answer to that question is, they're free to do whatever they want with it pursuant to the code.
Correct, exactly.
But it, but it doesn't have to be pursuant to the code then?
Yeah, I mean, it would always have to be, but you know-
It'll have to go through the system.
Right, right.
Right, I mean, they would have to come, you know, approval by the planning board or whatever the next business is gonna be.
Exactly.
I mean, quite honestly, they're all kinda young, and, and they're all in that business, I mean, the, you know, Matt, his brother Matt has one in, what, Valesgate or something?
The interesting thing about this project is as far as the board is concerned, if you basically take the five factors and lay it over this project, the answer to every one has to be no impact because it's the same exact situation it is now.
Right, it's already functioning.
I mean, there's no way you can analyze and say, if we put a line there, it's gonna pollute more than it does now.
Yeah, no.
No way you could say any of that.
This one doesn't concern me, the Nicole Street concerns me.
Did anybody see, um, I know the village got notice from the, from the Village of Washingtonville, um, they're gonna include it in the file on that Nicole Street project. They basically got a Washingtonville P D printout of like twenty-five arrests or calls in the last two years or something.
I, I didn't see that.
Yeah, no, uh, we were supposed to ask you if you-
An address?
Yes.
I did not see that at all. Where, where was that?
No, it, it wasn't, it wasn't provided to us, but John mentioned it previous, uh, earlier, I spoke to him on the phone. Just had a couple of questions about the C O for that home, and, uh, he mentioned that if we were interested in seeing any information on that, that we could ask you, Chris, if you had it available.
Yeah, I have it, um, let me, let me pull it up here, and ultimately, uh, I just got it tonight. And ultimately, like I said, the board is allowed to obviously consider anything that rolls in from the community, or, um, in, in, in weighing their decision, so, um, I'll send it out, and ultimately, uh, you guys can put it with the rest.
Are these just police being called to the property, or are these actually like arrests and things of that nature?
I think it's, I think they're blotter, I think they're blotter entries of just, um, every time the police were contacted and had to go out there.
During his ownership or previous ownership?
Current.
Really?
I believe.
Hi, it's Rich, just to interject. Uh, I think the blotter you're talking about, Chris, is actually just a one-month time period, and it was nineteen police calls in one month.
Wow, that's all?
Yeah, no, that's one month.
They're, they're trying to cut back.
Yeah, and it's a slew of different things from domestic violence and other issues, quite, quite a few, nineteen in one month.
Oh.
Mr. Agliani must have been a pretty busy boy.
We only have three minutes left, I see that countdown, just so everyone's aware.
Three minutes for what?
Meeting time.
I'll have to reset it.
I was gonna say, you can't, uh-
It doesn't show it on mine.
Yeah, I don't see a countdown either.
Well, I do, it's two thirty-three.
Thank you, Daddy.
Forty-nine, twenty-eight.
How do you see that?
Twenty-five.
Oh.
I don't see it, I don't know, Daddy told me.
Poor Kate's name.
I don't see any but her name.
I just sent you, uh, all the, uh, the, uh, police department records that were provided.
I, I mean, as far as the, the multifamily, there's just too many negatives in there for me.
It's illegal, it's legal to begin with, I'm not interested in entertaining their, look, their, uh, looking for a lot variances, I'm not interested-
My biggest concern is-
You know, whatsoever, it's up to code, and it's a single family to begin with, it's, you know?
Right, I'd just like to know how it ever got on the books as a, uh, as a, a two-family, because if you pull up one of the tax things-
It's a mother-daughter.
And, and, yeah, but it should, it still should have been a single family.
Exactly, it's not legal, uh, two-family.
So, you know, on that, I remember on that, um, in that case, the board basically has two issues before it. One ultimately, I guess, I guess, uh, one is negated, but they're based on a determination of the board, which is not uh, being decided tonight, but remember that, um, you got the interpretation of the building inspector, you got the variances. Obviously, if the board determined that it wa- it was not appropriate for variances, you don't have to worry about the building inspector's interpretation that a bigger setback should apply because of the R A district, okay? If the board was to agree that ultimately variances were permitted, the next thing the board has to decide is whether you believe a two-family in the residential zone ultimately should follow the residential setbacks or the R A setbacks, so-
Residential.
But he's just basically trying to make it into a three-family now. He took one of the rooms and made it into like a loft. With, with less than a six-foot ceiling.
Yeah, it's not up to code, I mean, it's not up, it's not even up to code for a single family, I don't believe.
I, I don't feel at all even entertaining that, to be honest with you.
Uh-oh. Alright, uh- Okay, is it working? I got your back again.
Yep, yeah.
Okay, I did it, I'm proud of myself. Okay. Make sure you're on camera, hang on, add them on the computer, oh.
Did you all happen to see the letter that was written from the village's attorney, um, on this issue as well?
Yes.
We're good to go, okay.
So that, that ultimately will be, uh, also admitted as part of the record.
I, I'm not interested in entertaining this one, that's, it's not even up to code, illegal, it should, first of all, it's illegal, and that needs to be sorted out. I don't know how we go about, how the village goes about that, but that needs to be, to me, fixed, number one. Number two, what is the C O? Is there, is there one?
According to this, there is no C O for it.
Right, right.
And, and supposedly the guy knew it, and somehow, don't ask me how, he managed to close anyway.
Exactly.
Which means the title company didn't do their job.
I think that we need to- I think that we need to.
Well, I think, I think, remember, I think this is one of these situations where um it's a cash deal, I would assume, okay, it's a foreclosure. Um, so I think what happened ultimately was is, I don't think a title company dropped the ball, because if you tell the title company, don't worry about the municipals. Then they're gonna obviously close without it, so I think there's, you know, I think you heard the applicant, he said, oh, I ran out of time, and I didn't know what was going on, so I just closed it.
He also said he took a mortgage though, I mean.
I think, I think maybe, did he take, did he say he took a mortgage once it went into the L L C, or initially?
He didn't, he just said, I have a mort- or took a mortgage.
So remember, um.
But he was called upfront that it was, it wasn't uh, it wasn't a two-family and, and, and it didn't have a C O, so he knew it going into it. And now he's crying about it because he can't do what he wants to do.
So what I, what, what is important on that is, obviously that applicant's gonna come back in February, right? And those, those factors that ultimately I discussed with you guys earlier. Basically, keep those in mind relative to questions that you want to pose to the applicant, okay? Um, you got that applicant in front of you, obviously you want to ask those questions, okay? Um, it's important, obviously, to get down how things transacted with the village, when he came in and who he talked to and. You know, what he did and, and etcetera, I mean, all that's relevant to the in- to inquiry, okay? Um, so you know, uh, ask the questions you want, ultimately, um, get the answers you want, you know, because when you make a decision, it asks you based on those factors, right? You can't, you can't make a decision on, hey, it's legal, obviously it's illegal because they're here, right? That's why they're here, so um, keep those in mind, ultimately, you uh, not only, you know, think about what the request is, but ultimately, when you want to pepper them with. Uh, concerns that you have, I mean, they're important.
Yeah, I, I don't have any other questions about that.
It's like he just keeps going from person to person, trying to get over.
Did um, was there any other extra info sent over on that project? I don't remember.
Not really.
Okay. So you know, an interesting thing, this is, this is something that always um stood out in my mind when we had a similar project in the village um across from Sunoco. And something that's, that I think is pertinent is, when you have a two-family, obviously you think that um rent. Is diminished because of the size of the premises, right, so you rent two spots for seven fifty, you know, can you rent, rent one spot for fifteen hundred? You know, I don't know the answer to that, right, but financially, obviously if there's no impact, that's something that the board might, might want to know. If ultimately, you know, it's something whereby um, the uh, you know, you might be able to maximize your return on a property the same way if you're renting it out.